All right. Thank you all for being here this evening.
May I please have everyone's attention? Before the meeting begins, we ask that you, at this time, please silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees Meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, patrons may only address the board during the designated audience item section of the agenda. If you have printed materials you want to give board members, you must provide them to me, the Board Secretary, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask that members of the audience be respectful of others and remain quiet during the meetings so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rozier. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum and this meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. All right, this is 6 o'clock. This is not the board meeting. This is the notice of Texas Academic Performance Report Hearing. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will point out to the board that due to the recent reorganization, accountability of this nature now resides under Gwen Touche, and so she's going to introduce the report this evening.
All right. Good evening, and tonight administration will be presenting to you the Texas Academic in Performance Report. We are excited to share the improvements that we're making as a district. Dr. Audra Udi and Carmela Levy-David will present to you our TAPER report, which is required by TEA on an annual basis, and in the presentation, they will indicate to you performance measures that indicate student and campus progress. Ladies?
Thank you. This evening, we will be speaking about the Texas Academic Performance Report, but we want to point out to our audience that FBISD is currently involved in a much larger effort to build a community-based accountability system, along with about 70 other districts in the state of Texas. And we feel this is important because the current A to F accountability system focuses on a single measure around STAR performance. And so we want to ensure that the accountability in the state of Texas represents all of the work that we do around developing the whole child and demonstrating all of the work that a school district does. In that new accountability system, our goal is to ensure that every student reaches their full potential and that we are basing that on the attributes found in the profile of a graduate. And being responsive to the hopes and dreams of our community for our students in our community. In this new accountability system, there are seven pillars represented here on the left side of the screen. All of the 70 districts that are involved in a group called the Texas Public Accountability Consortium are working together around these seven pillars. All have vetted and helped agree upon these pillars as our hope is to be able to influence what's happening on a statewide basis in regards to the accountability system. And this TPACK group has been working together with a gentleman named John Tanner and testens that think about what that new accountability system should look like. On the right, what you see is the representation of the accountability engine. The purpose of the accountability engine is a mental model that helps us process what it is that we're hoping to achieve with students and to move the organization in the direction of fulfilling those social dreams of our community. And so our design team has designed about 30 key questions that we're using to drive this work, and we are working with six pilot campuses currently to determine what that should look like within a school setting and move the organization toward the types of evidence that our community would believe is appropriate to represent fulfilling that mission that we have as a school district to serve the whole child. And so along the way, we will be signaling and demonstrating what types of success we're having in this new accountability system. One piece of that overall system is represented in the TAPER report tonight, and we have a responsibility to share with the public how we're doing in the Texas accountability arena. And so one of the things that we are responsible for doing is posting the full TAPER report that TEA provides on the district website and demonstrating to you what our performance is. So first, our accountability rating for finance is an A or a superior, the highest possible rating that a district could receive. In addition to that, on our aggregate performance, we have received a B for the 2019. This is 2018-2019 data, so we're looking back just our performance from last year. And we have received a B as a district. Actually, the district earned a 90 or an A. However, when a district has any campus that has a D or an S rating, then that causes the district to be capped at the 89 or the B level. However, I should also let you know that every single campus in FBISD earned or met standard on the new accountability A to F system. We do however have three overall D campuses that we're working to improve that rating for, so we want to continue to see growth and we'll demonstrate how we're working on that tonight. Additionally, we are accredited by TEA and we meet all requirements for our special education status. And you will find when we post the TAPER report on the district website, it will also contain our campus improvement plan performance objectives, what we're doing to improve performance for our students. And we're also working to show you our discipline data. I'll share a little bit of that with you shortly around violent criminal incidents. And then we also must post the higher ed board meeting board report on how our students are doing in those secondary settings. The next screen demonstrates to you our student pickup in Fort Bend ISD. This is important because FBISD is considered to be one of the most diverse districts in the nation. And so you will notice by looking at this pie chart that our three largest student groups are African-American, Hispanic, and Asian students, about a third each, and then we have our white population at about 16%, and then others representing about 4% of the district. In addition to that, we showed you the program breakdown. One of the things that we are seeing is the pattern in program performance is that our special education population is growing. As you may have heard in the news, there are rule changes that have happened at the state and federal level, and so we've seen about a 1%.
1% increase so far, and we anticipate seeing additional increases in the next few years. In addition to that, our Korean Tech population has grown about 1%. Our economically disadvantaged population has grown about 3%, and yet our at-risk population has gone down about 3%. So those are headed in the right direction. In addition to that, we have a staff profile, and what the staff profile does is compares how Fort Bend ISD measures up with our staffing patterns compared to the state level. On our staffing patterns, you will notice that we, the maroon bars represent FBISD, that we have about 46.6% of our staff in the classroom, serving students directly, and that's all types of teachers that serve our students. In addition to that, our school leadership is about 2.4% of our staff compared to 3% at the state, and our central administration is a half percent compared to over a full percent at the state level. Our two largest teacher groups by years of experience are those in the range of 1 to 5 years and 11 to 20 years in FBISD. The next slide has quite a bit of information on it, so I'm going to attempt to kind of get you to focus on the patterns in this data. One of the things about our STAR, our state accountability data, is that we seek to look at patterns over time. So these charts represent three years' worth of performance and the trends that we're seeing in that performance. And if you will notice, this is the reading data summed across grades 3 through 8 in high school testing. So it's all of the students who take the STAR test. In the top-left corner, we have the percentages of students passing the test, so that's what we call approaches grade level or above. And then the next over on the top-right is the percent that met grade level or above. And then the bottom list is who performed the highest, the masters or above level. The bottom-right corner represents the percent of students who did not meet grade level in each of our student groups. One of the patterns that you'll notice across reading is in that nearly all of our student groups, we are seeing growth across the three-year pattern. So this is a positive trend that we're seeing in FBISD. We did have a little bit of a decrease in special education on the meets grade level performance, but overall, the passing performance improved. So then, what we want to look at too is that we compare how our students or student groups are doing against one another so that we can try to improve that performance for all of our students. So you will notice when we look at the did-not-meet-grade-level in the bottom-right, we have a much smaller percentage in our white and Asian student populations that are not being successful on the STAR test. We have a much larger percentage that we still want to address in our economically disadvantaged Hispanic and African-American student populations, and those track each other. Almost every bit of data we have for 2019 shows African-American and Hispanic right next to each other, as well as comparable to the economically disadvantaged performance. So those are areas that we're targeting as a district to help improve access to the curriculum, ensure the rigor in the curriculum, and ensure the instructional model is sound to help reach all of our students in helping them achieve passing or better performance on the STAR. Let's look now at math, and we've chosen tonight to focus on reading and math at the district level because if we were to put writing, social studies, and science up here tonight, you would see that the trends are very similar in those content areas. So we've chosen to focus on these foundational areas. In math, the trends are even stronger in terms of the percentage growth over the last three years, and so you see even more green on this particular chart. And again, the same patterns demonstrate themselves in math between our white and Asian students versus how our African-American, Asian, I'm sorry, African-American economically disadvantaged and Hispanic students are performing. So those are trends we want to disrupt as a district in order to continue getting better. One other new segment of the accountability system, and this information is just two years old, so we can't establish three-year trends here, but one of the other pieces of information that is very important in the new state accountability system is looking at school progress. And this school progress measure essentially looks at how a student performed last year on the test, what their scale score was compared to the scale score in the current year, and if that, if there's enough difference there, that the student was considered to grow at least a year. And so if the student grew a full year, then the campus received a point for that. If it was something less than that, but still good growth, the campus received a half point. And if there was not enough growth or no growth, then the campus received zero points. And so what you see up here represented on this bar graph is not a percentage of students, it's a percentage of points that the school has earned to demonstrate growth for the campus. And so breaking that out, the red line represents how all students are doing at the state level, just so you have a frame of reference for this new indicator. And that performance level is at a 68, and you can see that most all of our student groups are at or above that level. We do have two groups, our economically disadvantaged and our African-American student population that we still need to strive to get above that level. But you will see too that we are either constant or improving in terms of the trends in growth. In addition to that, let's look at the math performance. That was the reading. Let's look at the math. At the math performance level, at the state level, the marker there is a 70 in progress score, and all of our student groups, again, performed well against that with growth in English learners' performance, economically disadvantaged, Asian, Hispanic, African-American, and our all-student group. So much stronger growth happening in our math areas. One additional piece of information that we are required to share with you in our TAPER report, and this report is prepared by the district, TEA guides us as to which discipline actions to include in this report, but ultimately, this particular report addresses the most serious behaviors, so things that might involve terroristic threat or something at a felony level or drug and alcohol, those types of things would be considered part of this report. And if we look at the prior year compared to last year, what we see is that that percentage increased by .10% at the district level. However, at the elementary level, it decreased by .2%, stayed the same at middle school, and increased at high school level. And the last bit of information that I will share with you tonight is a very positive trend in how our students are meeting the college career and military readiness indicators. This means students have either successfully completed a dual-credit course, passed an advanced placement exam at an appropriate level to get college credit, or made a score on an SAT, SAT, or what we call the TSI exam, to allow them to be college or career or military-ready. And so when we look across all of our student groups in the accountability report for the class of 2017 to the class of 2018, what we see is that every single student group increased their performance around meeting the college career and military readiness indicators. And so that's very exciting information, that by the time students are graduating from FBISD, they are prepared to go off into their various pathways and be successful there. We'd like to share a little more information with you tonight, and Carmela Levy-David, Assistant Superintendent, will help share that information with you.
Thank you, Audra.
Thank you, Audra. Before you, you see data describing our four-year graduation rates as a comparison, and the highlight is, I think is a celebratory highlight, that we continue to increase our graduation rate across our grade levels in Fort Bend ISD. We also have a slight increase in our continuing high school students. Those are our students who actually graduate beyond four years, maybe five or six years, and we may attribute that to our increase in our special education population. The next slide is our comparison by student group, and this is our graduation rate by student group. And again, very positive trend here with the majority of our student groups exceeding and actually improving their graduation rates. One of the areas where we will be focusing will be on working with our Hispanic and our special education groups to continue that trend with those student groups as well. Up until now, a lot of the information that you have heard has been past information of how we performed on STAR. In order for us to have an impact on student learning and growth and the interventions that will help our students to be successful, it's really important to understand how students are performing right now. And to do that, we rely on our universal screener, which is our RIN360 assessment. And before you, you have a comparison, actually, you have data for grades Kinder through 6 for reading, and what is indicated on the data is the student growth percentage for each one of those groups. Student growth percentage is indicative of students actually meeting grade level progress for the year. On the following slide, we have the same data for our students in grades 7 through 12, and again, it's very similar to what we just saw with our lower grades, where we are looking at the student growth percentile in reading, and this is the middle-of-the-year assessment, which is when we actually assess that growth. And the next piece is actually the middle-of-the-year math assessment for RIN360. And the results are just slightly below those of reading, but not significantly so. And again, this is grades Kinder through 6 for the middle-of-the-year RIN360 math. The next slide is grades 7 through 12 for math performance, and again, those are very similar. One thing that I do want to note is that as students progress from grade to grade and move from elementary to secondary, they have lower participation rates in RIN360. RIN360 at that time is provided at the teacher's discretion for our students who have not been successful on STAR, on their end-of-course exams, or who are participants in our special education programs or 504 dyslexia programs. And finally, for this evening, I want to talk a little bit about our campus support systems. As Audra mentioned earlier, we have several campuses with specific state and federal designations. We have two campuses in Year 2 of comprehensive status, that's Hunter's Glen and Lantern Lane. We have three campuses with an overall D rating, that would be McAuliffe Middle School, Goodman, and Richmond Elementary. And we have continued the work that we began last year to support our comprehensive schools and implemented a very individualized system of support for the campuses that have overall D ratings to ensure that they can continue to support student growth and improve. And part of that work involves our campus support team walks, which help to provide a lot of feedback and a lot of planning for effective instruction and Tier 1 instruction. Also, our job-embedded professional development that includes professional development targeted to our professional learning communities and our impact teams. We also have other supports that are district-led supports, such as the All-In Mentoring Program, which is currently being held at Goodman Elementary. And we also participate in the Region 4 Educational Service Center Program for Texas Instructional Leadership, which is a program where campuses receive a great deal of training for aggressive monitoring of instruction, for data-driven instruction, and for how to interpret different data trends across the campus. And finally, the last piece that I want to address and thank the board tremendously for their support is the addition of the School Improvement Specialist positions this past year. Those individuals actually visit campuses throughout the week, several times a week, and have a lot of face time with campus leaders and faculty to not only assess different campus systems, but provide operational roadmaps that help to prevent barriers to student growth and student success. And so that individualized attention and additional layer of support for our leaders has been very welcome and very successful indeed this year. At this time, I am going to invite Dr. Udi to discuss next steps.
One of the things you may be curious about tonight is learning more about the community-based accountability system that we're building. And again, this paper information that we've shared with you tonight is one small piece of evidence that we use to assess where we were at the end of last year and then to assess progress using RIN throughout the year to intervene for students and to make decisions along the way to help take us in the direction that we want to go as an organization. So currently, we have six pilot campuses in operation who are working around two of the seven pillars. And then we are about to start training the next group of 10 campuses, so the next cohort will start training in the spring to launch in the 2020-21 school year. And then our plan is next spring to train up all of the remainder of our campuses to implement the following school year. The board has taken a great deal of effort in the last couple of months to update board policies, the B-series board policies. So if you were to look at last month's agenda, you would see that the board has updated the B-series to be inclusive of community-based accountability in order to support the work that we are doing in the district and throughout the state. Additionally, we are working with our operational teams and really striving to move the district in the direction of a broader, more holistic accountability system that represents all of the work that our district is doing. And you will see progress. Our first community-based accountability reporting will happen by August 2020 around the work that has been done in the six pilot campuses this year, so I'm excited to bring that to you later this year. Finally, if you want to know more about the community-based accountability system or to access the entire TAPER report, you may do so through the district webpage. If you go to the Accountability Department, you will see this full report and the presentation that we've done here tonight, as well as an FAQ around community-based accountability, and we are adding content there all of the time to help demonstrate the good work that is happening in the school district. So we thank you for being here tonight, and we welcome any questions that any of the audience members or board members may have.
Thank you, Dr. Udi and Ms. David. We really appreciate the presentation. Do I have any questions this evening for any fellow board members? I had a quick question on Slide 13. Maybe, it says 13 on the bottom corner.
Thank you, graduation rate. Okay.
There we go. So could you help me understand this a little bit better? I'm struggling here to, maybe I'm thinking about this too much, but graduated, does that mean 95.9% of students graduated? Just, what does that mean?
So this is following the federal definition of the graduation rate. There are some slight differences on the state rate, but the state has moved to use the national definition now. So over the last four years, 95, or rather, for the class of 2018, 95.9% of our students graduated within four years of starting high school. That's the federal definition. And then 0.3% pursued the CHSE route, which is formerly known as the GED route. And then 1.3% continued on a fifth or a sixth year toward graduation. And then dropout rate was 2.7%. So when you get down to that next line, graduates and those who completed the high school equivalency, that was 96%. And then they also do another calculation that includes the students who are still enrolled in high school for a fifth or sixth year to get the 97.3.
How do these numbers compare statewide?
We're above the state numbers, and part of the goal in the state accountability system is to be above 94% or to continue to increase .10% a year, and we're doing well on that.
These numbers look really, really good. So, thank you for that. And then I'll get to you, Mrs. James, I'll make one more comment while I have the floor here. So the college career military readiness slide.
Yes, sir.
I love this. This is great. I mean, at the end of the day, we're trying to produce productive taxpaying citizens, and to me, that shows that we are being successful in growing that, so I'm really proud of that. I wanted to make that comment.
And we want to thank the board for the efforts you've made to put additional measures in place around dual-credit, early-college, TSI testing, because that's what has helped these numbers be able to grow. We've given students more access.
Thank you very much. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Merdeen, and thank you ladies for a nice presentation and very informative. I heard, one of the things I heard you say in addressing achievement gaps with African-American students, Hispanic students, and economically disadvantaged students, you've pointed those differences out and you've got plans in place to continue addressing that. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I also noted in a number of these areas, we've got gaps in special education, and I wondered if you had, I haven't, I can't remember what you've told us before, so if you could remind me to what we're attributing these kinds of gaps and what we're doing or how we're addressing it, if someone wouldn't mind.
I'll let Ms. Deana Hill come up and help share some of the strategies that our special education programming is using.
Thank you. Well, I think we did make, with reading, we, I think we did well or making gains. Math was an area of challenge. When we went back and looked at that, some of that was our secondary level, our EOCs, and so we knew that that's a challenge. And so in some of the work that we're doing in the area of co-teach and really trying to get our kids out of that specialized setting for resource and into the generalized setting to have more access, we feel like is going to be powerful. That's the number-one thing that we're doing is more inclusive work.
Thank you for sharing that. So that's, as we continue to invest in the co-teach model, you think it's going to have a positive impact on our, on our special education students?
I think it, co-teach as well as serving kids in general ed with, not necessarily always with two teachers the whole time, but with, sometimes it's with teachers going in three days a week, you know, as pair professionals actually helping. The main goal is getting kids out of those specialized settings and into that classroom where they're hearing that, you know, that first-line instruction from the general ed teacher.
And they're having full access to the content, I guess is what I'm hearing you say.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. James. This is Heliger.
Okay, y'all can start all over now. Okay, no, just joking. But I just wanted to add to that point around the co-teaching is something I wanted to emphasize, is that our general ed kids, we don't want them to be impacted by the co-teach situation. Because I know I've had several different parents who have raised their concern around that, to making sure that their child is still getting, they're not being held back because of the special needs or the special support that we're giving to our own kids. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we communicate it appropriately. Just kind of reemphasizing this, because we talked about this a little bit last year, and I just wanted to reemphasize that again this year.
Yeah, and some of that is really about monitoring those class loads and making sure that when we're placing students in a classroom, particularly the co-teach classroom, that we're looking at those numbers. I mean, typically, we'd want not more than a third of the students to be students with disabilities, so that's in a co-teach setting. So a lot of it is monitoring and ensuring that we have good systems in place, and so we work with campus administration, master schedule counselors, as we work on how they're placing students in classrooms to ensure that those numbers don't get to the point where we have, you know, 50% of students, they're students with disabilities, and the other 50, general ed, and then we have some, maybe some challenges with keeping up.
Okay. Nice.
Thank you very much. Once again, thank you for the presentation. That's a whole lot of information in a short amount of time, so I appreciate all your hard work. We're going to go right to the board agenda review in about one minute, but I wanted to see if Dr. Hill could come up here for just one second. to see if Dr. Hill could come up here for just one second. Excuse me. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm legally adjourned.
This meeting is now adjourned. It's going to be about one minute.
I understand my adjournment.
Do we have any comments from the public?
I'm legally adjourned.
This meeting is now adjourned.